Good evening, everyone. Today, June 20, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., I call for order. Board members, please join me for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Seth Nubek here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco. Absent. Trustee Nalomothu.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And Trustee Stone.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay. Any motion to approve the agenda?
A move to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Board and public announcement. Board members and individuals in the audience may make a statement containing information about our recent or upcoming event. Anyone that would like to address to the board? Anyone online? Okay. Moving on. Public comments. Anyone that would like to address to the board? Anyone in the audience who would like to address to the board for five minutes?
Time for our student to get up and talk, right?
Or any student or anyone that would like to address to the board? We welcome any input or comments. Okay. Okay. Anyone online? Okay. Moving on. We don't have a public hearing, so we're moving on to presentations and report. Presentation of 2022 financial audit, Plant Moran or Finance Director Linda Benz.
Yeah. Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. I'm Joe Kowalski, Audit Partner with Plant Moran. And with me today is Ashley Fraze, Senior Manager with Plant Moran. And Ashley's going to talk a little bit about some of the financial highlights and the results of the audit. But I'm going to just kick off by giving some introductory comments and walking you through some of our required communications. So first of all, I'd like to say a big thank you to Township Management, Supervisor's Office, Clerk and Treasurer, and a huge thank you to Linda and Cheryl and the entire team at the Township. Because, you know, going through an audit is never easy. And, you know, there's, we always have multiple people onsite asking multiple questions an hour. And so we really do appreciate the level of preparedness and the responsiveness and the professionalism afforded to us throughout the audit. So thank you for that. Just take a couple of minutes and walk you through the letter that should be in your package. It's from us to you. This is a letter summarizing the overall results of the audit. And what you'll see in that letter is, it's dated May 30th. So we have completed our audit for the year ended December 31st, 2022, and issued that back on May 30th. And this letter here has three sections in it. There's section one is internal control matter that I will discuss with you in a second. And section two is required communications. And so I'm going to kind of run through those pretty quickly and just highlight a couple of the important matters there. And then section three is information that would be useful to you as members of the elected official body. So you might want to just take a read through that and let us know if you have any questions. So let me just start out by saying, on the financial statements, you did get a clean opinion. And so what that means is it's an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can get on your financial statements. So they can be relied on. In our audit, under section one in the letter, which starts on page two, we did have one matter that's an internal control matter. This is related to an entry that needed to be recorded by management related to the CIA for a property tax capture. And although the amount was relatively small, because the CIA itself is relatively small, then what that does is it makes it a material matter for us in the way that we define materiality. So as a result of that, we're required then to report to you the fact that the entry needed to be recorded to make those CIA statements correct. And that's what we're doing here with this letter. And so we call it a material weakness on internal control. And what that really means is, is that the process that the township used to identify the correct amount for the tax capture entry didn't operate correctly to determine the correct amount until we brought that up in the audit. And then it has been corrected. So those statements, as you see them today, are the corrected statements.
Real quick question.
Sure.
Just to confirm, for residents who are wondering about this, this isn't related to any issues with the tax bills we sent out and how much tax we collected. It's really more complex issue. And I want to point out, in doing settlement with the county, the software that we utilize and most of the communities in the state utilize doesn't correctly calculate this. It ends up having to be done by hand. So it's not that surprising that there's, can be errors like this with the CIA TIF captures. Because it ends up being a significant part of it as a manual process. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. And there was no taxpayers that would be impacted by that.
Yep.
Just moving on to the next section, which is section two of the letter, starts on page three. This is just some reminders about the scope of our audit. We did communicate to you in the letter on March 8th about the scope of our audit and the timing of our audit. And we were able to complete that within the plan, scope, and timing. And there was one new pronouncement, accounting standard issued by GASP that the township had to implement during the year. And that's the standard related to leases. So the township did go through an exercise in determining whether or not there are any amounts to record related to that. And just a thing to note about GASP 87 is that even though there were no material or significant amounts in leases that needed to be recorded in the current year, that is one of these Gaspys that's ongoing. And so as you enter into new contracts, you'll need to evaluate whether or not it's a lease and needs to be recorded under GASP 87. Down at the bottom of page three, just reporting to you that we had no difficulties encountered during the audit. In fact, we had complete cooperation at all time, and we had no disagreements with management. At the top of page four, the corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We already talked about the corrected misstatement, which was the CIA tax capture. There were some uncorrected misstatements, and these are listed here in this paragraph. And what these represent are amounts that were determined to be not material by the management of the township and therefore did not need to be recorded to make the statements materially correct. We agreed with that assessment. And so these are amounts that are not recorded in the statements. And so we're required to list them here for your benefit. Just a couple of other quick things is that we had no other significant findings or issues to report. This would be the complete report on the audit. Moving to section three, I would recommend that you read this. And if you have any follow-up questions, let us know. But just a couple of quick things. One I've already mentioned is the ongoing requirement to monitor your new contracts for lease activity. And then the second one would be, which you're certainly already aware of, is the inflation rate multiplier for 2023 was 1.079. And so it just means that you're at the cap of 1.05. There are other interesting things in this section of the letter, so I would encourage you to read them and let us know if you have any questions. Now, Ashley will cover some of the highlights of the financial statements and sort of the meat of the topic.
Sure. Before I get into that, did just want to mention the other deliverable that you have is just a two-page letter. This is the compliance examination for the spending of what's known as ARPA dollars. So under the 2022 compliance supplement issued by the Offices of Management and Budget by federal, there was an alternative procedure examination that was able to be performed for the township given its kind of federal expenditures as a whole for the year and the majority being that ARPA spending. So this is the independent accountant's report on kind of that specific compliance examination that details mostly the activities allowed or unallowed under that compliance supplement specific to the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund program. And you can see at the bottom of page one that, you know, the township complied in all material respects with the specific requirements under that examination as a result of those procedures performed. So that would be a separate deliverable that you wouldn't have been in the past. All right. So getting into the slides, these are kind of high level. Feel free to stop me. So you also have the larger deliverable, the 100 and some page bound copy of the financial statements. This just kind of points out the highlights and trends of the past five years and tells a little bit more of a story than looking at, you know, just all of those pages. So this first slide are the revenues for all of the township's governmental funds. So these are all of the township's funds with the exception of the water and sewer funds. And a couple highlights. So on the far left is the property tax category over the past five years. Obviously, this is the largest stream of revenues for the township. It increased a little bit over the past year. Did want to point out that since 2018, there was that increase with the oncoming of the road millage fund. And 2022 is the last year that that road millage will be recognized as revenue is about 3.5 million for 2022. So that'll go down with the, you know, expiration of that millage. The state shared revenue and grants in the next bulk of category there. So that, the increase there is mostly related again to that ARPA spending. So in the governmental funds, the township did have some capital projects that they applied ARPA dollars to. So the spending of those triggers the revenue recognition of those grants. And so that's the increase there. And the last thing I wanted to point out is the fourth block of columns over is kind of that licenses, charges for services, revenues. The increase in licenses and permits really is driven by development within the township. And so given, you know, increased development each year, that would fluctuate again another increase this year due, you know, some building and building permits and those associated permits. It also increased related to charges for services. So as, you know, the services such as parks and recreation, you know, police services that are provided to different community organizations, you know, those charges increase as a result, kind of post-COVID, coming out of that and kind of return to normal for full year of 2022. Moving on next are the same, you know, all the governmental funds, but the expenditures and a couple highlights here. So the far left is, are the police expenditures. Again, as I mentioned, the kind of return to normal for the police mini contracts for schools. And the theater down the road did increase in, increase expenditures as well as charges for services when you bill those out to those organizations. For the fire fund, a little bit of a decrease from 2021. You can see as it relates to a decrease in capital spending for the fire fund. Did want to point out that the jump since 2021, the township has made additional contributions to the fire pension liability the last two years to kind of get that funding increased. So that's kind of what that increase relates to. Again, the recreation and culture kind of return to normal operations. General government, you can see the increase in 2022. So there was the IT project that ARPA dollars were applied to, but the expenditures are recognized here for that ARPA spending. And then the November 2022 general election was kind of, you know, not reoccurring year over year. And then the last highlight, so again, public works and capital outlay. You can see in 2020, some significant, you know, public works being road spending and those capital projects when that millage came on. And then capital outlay in 2020 related to some fire capital outlays, kind of that fluctuates year over year. So you can see it's been kind of all over the board, but just did want to point out that gold bar for 2020. And then kind of bringing it all together, so this is your ending fund balance. So when you take your revenues and expenditures for each of those years, really, what does your ending fund balance look like as of December 31st of each of those years? So in the far right is 2022. And you can see that the trend line of fund balance increased since the prior year about, by about $3.8 million. The total fund balance at December 31st, 2022 was about $29.7 million. So again, those are all governmental funds. So on this next slide, you know, there are various restrictions and assignments of those monies. They're not just available for, you know, all government-wide operations. So on this slide here, each of the different colors of the bars represent a different component of fund balance. Starting at the top is kind of the most restrictive. And then as you work down to the teal of each bar, that's the unassigned or available fund balance. So the gold portion is the restricted fund balance. So in those funds that have a legal restriction such as millage dollars, any fund balance that remains in those funds is restricted for that purpose. So your police fund, fire, roads, you know, safety millage fund, all of those dollars are, you know, available at end of the year, but restricted for certain purposes. In the orange, so those are assignments of fund balance. So management, township management has taken, you know, a look at total available fund balance and assigned some dollars when they look at, you know, projected future plans. So what this shows is kind of the intent, the intent to use those dollars for different things. To the extent an emergency or something comes up, they're not committed or anything. So they can be used or be unassigned, I guess. But you can see the details in the financial statements of kind of the categories of assignment. And it does mostly relate to road projects, parks, and other capital projects that, you know, that management has looked at as, you know, future intent to use.
Ashley?
Yep, sure.
And this includes a police millage too, right?
It does, yep.
So one of the reasons that 2022, at the end of the year, has a jump here is because we, I don't believe it's reflective, the fact that we owed the county close to $3 million for police services, but there were problems with their bills and we simply couldn't pay them until they gave us the corrected bills.
At the end of '22?
Yes. Because we, in fact, in this packet, we've got over almost $4 million being paid to the county. And I think the bulk of it is for August through December of last year where they finally, they got a new system. We just couldn't pay the bills until they got it corrected because the Supervisor's Office has to review those things. And so that number would have been significantly lower because...
So, so that number doesn't, is included in there as an estimate. So we did work with the finance team to, you know, I know you don't have the invoice in front of you, but you do need to estimate how much you owe the county for those last three months.
So it's not included?
It's not, sorry. Those spending are included in the expenditure, so it's reflected as a reduction. Yeah, the spending has already been reflected in this number, if that's helpful. It's probably not the exact dollar amount, but it was an estimate that we asked management to put together to accrue for it, even though it hadn't been paid.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the teal, the bottom portion of the 2022 column is again, that unassigned or available fund balance. So as of December 31st, 2022, that was about $2.6 million. You can see that's an increase from last year. And really, when you look at your unassigned or available fund balance, if you look at that as a percentage of your annual expenditures, that's kind of the, you know, the factor to look at. And it's about 31% of the township's annual expenditures, which is an increase from prior year. And, you know, is pretty consistent with, you know, where the township has been historically. And, you know, and looking at the size of the township's budget, it's about, you know, three, three and a half months. If you had no other inflows, you know, you had that fund balance available. So stepping back a little bit and looking at the longer-term picture. So what the funds don't include are long-term liabilities or assets. So your capital assets, long-term debt, you know, your net pension liability. So when you look at that as the township as a whole on the far right, that's kind of what your net position is. The net investment in capital assets is the first category, the gold. So you can see that, that's essentially your net book value of your assets, net of any debt. So as those continue to depreciate, you can see that gold has been, you know, trending consistent as the township's invested in additional capital year over year, although, you know, those assets are depreciating. And then in the teal, you can see the unrestricted net position. So, you know, as kind of your pension liability gets funded or improved, a decreased liability, you know, your total unrestricted net position has increased, you know, the last couple of years. All right. So two more slides, and these really do kind of shift gears to look at the water and the sewer funds since they're not part of your kind of governmental fund. So this slide looks at your operating revenue trends of the water fund. So in the teal is operating revenue and the operating expenses each year. In the orange, you can see for the past five years, operating revenue has exceeded expenses for, you know, net operating income. There are non-operating things such as interest expense and things like that that flow into the water fund. But, you know, just continuing to monitor this as you look at, you know, long-term capital projects, capital needs when you're setting your rates and your budget each year. So it's not, you know, it's not always correlating as, you know, the significant excess if you have non-operating when you're looking outwards towards your capital needs, just making sure that you look at that as part of your, continue to look at that as part of your budget and rate setting, as I know you do. And then the sewer fund. So this is a little bit different picture, I guess, from the water fund where you can see the expenses are a little bit larger than revenue each of the past five years. But really, the sewer fund has kind of non-operating capital tap-in fees that get reflected each year. So when you consider those for 2022, it practically broke even. So again, considering, you know, tap-in fees do fluctuate year, year over year. They're usually going to be there, but it depends on development and growth within the community. So, you know, when you're looking at budgets and rate setting and future capital needs, just considering that. And then kind of to wrap up, I know Joe already covered the letter, but this is kind of our auditor responsibility under the standards. I know the letter kind of covered, you know, what the audit includes in our report back to the board. And then the opinion on the financial statements, as Joe mentioned, an unmodified opinion. And Joe mentioned it in the letter, but in our actual opinion letter, when you look at page one of the financial statements, there's an emphasis of matter paragraph that you wouldn't have seen last year. And that is just related to the adoption of the new lease standard. So no modification to our opinion or anything, but that is just a required emphasis of matter to the reader of the financials in the opinion letter. Any questions or other highlights?
Any questions from board members?
Appreciate all your work.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And Cheryl.
Yep. Kudos to the team and thanks for, you know, all the efforts and preparedness in going through the audit, especially, you know, with the new compliance examination and all of that, so.
Then you'll be clapping now that's all over us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No more questions, so moving on. We don't have anything for a carryover postponed, so moving to the consent agenda. Request to approve the board of trustees regular and close session meeting minutes on June 6, 2023. Request to approve the June 13, 2023 check run of $4,524,248.65 and ratify the June 9, 2023 payroll of $324,802.60 and June 2023 ACH activity of $28,444.48. And lastly, request to approve the fireworks display permit for Lake Orlklam fireworks, fun, American Legion. Pause. Okay? I need a motion?
A move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Need a second?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We don't have any items removed from this agenda, so we're going to regular business. Okay. As you guys know, I received the resignation of Elgin Massa. He was serving in the Planning Commission. So now I'm presenting a new recommendation for the Planning Commission. It's Kevin Basru. Kevin, actually, he was recommended before by Supervisor Kiddo back in 2012, if you guys remember, November 2012. Probably Paul and Ron remember that. He served for quite a long time, for many years. He have experience in Planning Commission, like he knows how to read blueprints. And what was, he actually worked with some current members, I believe Ron, he served with you. And he have a lot of experience. And I think he's someone that's ready to go, someone that we add is going to bring good input and, you know, history. And he's well-prepared and qualified for the position. So I would like to open this for discussion with board members. I mean, any, any questions for, any board members? Any concerns, questions, comments? Trustee Ritchie.
Yeah, I guess when we voted on the Planning Commission member the last time, there was several applications at that time, more than the five or four in the packet this time. And I was wondering what we do with those people. It's like, seems like there was seven or eight applications in the last time. It wasn't that long ago. That's, I guess I just am trying to understand, you know, do they expire or have to, do they have to reapply or what is that?
Well, some of them have been, far as I recall, has been applying not just for the Planning Commission. Some people when they apply, they apply for all the boxes. And they have been, some of them are, asked me to be appointing different committees, like safety pad. I mean, this is the people at this point that apply when we open this position. And that's all I can, I can tell you right now. As you know, the, I mean, after I got the position, I bring the recommendation today because I see that Kevin Basru is, in my opinion, is will qualify for being the Planning Commission.
One of the other prior candidates has been appointed to ZBA. I do know that.
Okay.
That one's not on there.
I can think of two or three names that were on your, on the, you know, that were listed here the last time that were not on here. So that's why I just wondered if we reached out to them at all. Because it's like...
Yep.
Because I guess one of my, not complaints, my comments the last time was that, you know, there's people that applied months before the person that we selected. And I guess, to me, they had interests. And if we're not recognizing that interest, I guess that, that just bothers me, so.
No, well, a couple, a couple of things. I was told by, one, I think somebody, I don't recall right now the name, but I will come to, for instance, Emily Ford. She now wants to be serving in the Planning Commission. I was told, was just recently. And then, you see, when, I don't want to say much, but when we have, when we have members in the past and asked for being reappointed back just last year, we not even look into who applied. I know we just straight go and apply whoever the name is, if I remember correctly. And, well, now, I mean, in this may, if you see all the names of the people that apply, and I recommend who I think in my faculties, because a supervisor can recommend them. So I recommended Kevin Basru. But this is the people that apply and that's all I can tell you.
Okay. I just, that was kind of weird that we had seven or eight applications.
I just want to say that I have worked with Kevin for years on the Planning Commission. He always was prepared. He understands it. I'm pretty sure that he's taken the Master's Citizen Planning Course through Michigan State Extension, which is mandatory to be reappointed, which he was. So he's already met the education qualifications for reappointment to the Planning Commission that typically you have, you know, after your first term, you have to have that Michigan State certification in order to be reappointed. So he's already done that. So I can say I worked with him and he did a good job. And he's got, and taken the classes required, you know, that we require. So I am in support of that nomination.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone from the public who would like to address to the board? Kevin?
I just... I just appreciate the consideration and I enjoy being on the Planning Commission for...
Excuse me, really quick, can you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kevin Busrow, 6480 Pine Valley Road, Clarkston. Just wanted to make myself available for if you guys had any questions. And appreciate the consideration and I'm looking forward to community, or contributing to my community again. Like Sam said, I do have the background and been a citizen of Independence for 15-plus years now. And been tried, tried my best to be active and involved. And quite a bit I've worked with a number of the members of this board. And I think Trustee Stone actually had... And I think trustee Stone actually had an interview with my wife just the other day on connecting Clarkston. So indirectly, we've, we've, we've met, so. I just want to appreciate it. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Sure. Any questions for the board members?
Just appreciate you willing to serve.
Thank you.
Do people tell you you look like Michael Keaton?
That's a new one. I don't know where this one came from, but I did just hear Dave Matthews just the other day. And I don't look anything like him, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to appoint Kevin Busrow as a regular member of the planning commission to complete the unexpired term of Eugene Mazza, scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2025.
One second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, congratulations. Thank you, thank you for serving. Okay. I guess we need to make a motion for a closed session.
So next on the agenda, we are moving to closed session. I'll make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss confidential legal opinions pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268H and MCL 15 2431G regarding pending litigation and zoning ordinance amendments. One second.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, okay.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalomothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Stoyan?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Back to order.
I'll make a motion to return from closed session and to resume the regular meeting at 8:13 PM.
Support.
Need a second?
We did.
Oh, second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also like to make a motion to authorize legal counsel to proceed as discussed in closed session. One second. We don't need a roll call on it, do we?
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Also like to make a motion to recuse.
So I have to, I have a request, right?
Go ahead, sorry.
Uh, so I request to be recused from one of the items discussed in closed session, just for appearance sake.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Is that still being judged?
Yeah, we're good, right? Okay.
I'll make a motion to direct, the director of planning, Brian Ottman, to set a public hearing for the ordinance amendment, recommended ordinance amendment on the non-resident, on the zoning board of appeals issue.
Okay. Motion has may, any second?
A second.
Okay, motion has been second. There will be a roll call or?
No.
No?
Doesn't need roll call.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Three.
Okay.
Nine.
Three opposed, okay. Okay, motion carried. All right. Okay. All right. Any, I guess, communications and features? Agenda items, we have fiscal 2023 actual budget comment, comments for period ending on May 31st, 2023. Second report is Orklin County Sheriff's Department monthly report, May 2023. Third, report, Independence Fire Department monthly report, February 2023. Fourth, communications, 2023 holiday schedule amend, amendment. Board members, board member comments?
I've got a couple.
Trustee Morocco?
I just wanted to update everybody on the residential open space advisory committee had their first meeting. It was a very good meeting, 12 very respectable people in the township. Working, some of our key points were to work to define open space so that we could understand what exactly we were, you know, focusing in on for the township. And at our next meeting, we'll be electing officers. Mr. Fisher was kind enough to look into the bylaws for us, to draft them up hopefully for us, to save us a little bit of money on that end, since that's his specialty and he's on the board. So I thought that was nice of him to offer that. And then secondly, met with Lisa Christensen today, the deputy director of the parks, interim director out at Bay Court. They got the underground in finally for the electrical, we're waiting for the wires to be pulled. We are expecting to be able to be fully air-conditioned by the first rentals in July. So the window treatments got put in, which was very nice. I saw them for the first time today, all automated shades in the belt, very pretty. So it's coming along good over there. So we, that's going to be a real good money generator for the township.
Thank you, Sam. I, I would say a few things, Sam. One, it's about that safety path committee and they done a great job with trustee Rich, it was actually last week with, with them. And director of DPW, Dave McKee, they accomplish, they actually finalized the safety path that's connecting Curtis Lane, Part View to Bay Court Park. So it's a nice safety path now and thanks to board of trustees for support that as well. And that make it easy for residents to walk through the parks back and forth to Bay Court. That's a great accomplishment and very nice, something that, that community will enjoy a lot. And lastly, this week, I want to chat with you guys, I'm expecting my first baby, it's going to be a boy. And we expecting on that 22nd, so we are very happy, exciting, good addition for the family. That's all I want to chat with you and the public because we are very excited about it. We got nice comments and support from the community, it's very nice. We, we are excited, we are.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you guys.
Well, I just want to jump back to Bay Court. We, we approved a pavement of the driveway too, has that been scheduled, did we know?
So the, the asphalt company has been in, in conversations with the playground company because there's some curb cuts and handicap ramps that need to be coordinated. So they've already talked to coordinate that. We're looking at the option of possibly doing the first layer of asphalt and then letting the playground get built. And then doing the top coat after the playground construction at the very end, at what the, how that would adjust the cost possibly. But that would get us paved before the end of summer. Otherwise, if we have to wait for the playground to go in, it'd probably be fall before we get the asphalt in. So that's how it was left today with Lisa at the meeting. So Lisa, myself and Larry Hess, you know, Parks manager, and Dave Moran, who's been working on the utilities on the building, we had our meeting today. That was the latest word on that as of today.
So you're trying to get it scheduled for this year anyway, so.
Pardon?
We're trying to get it scheduled for this year.
It's definitely getting paved this year. It's just whether or not we get, you know, a first coat early in the year and the final coat last in the year. If financially, if that works out, I would prefer that so that the construction traffic isn't on the final road and when we're done, we're done.
Also keep the dust down in the meantime, too.
And there was some, what hadn't been included in the original was the restriping and the black topping, seal coating of the Bay Court, which we talked about today, because I, I thought that it would be a good idea that we get it all, the whole park up to speed so that maybe if we got, because we do want to change the striping and the parking layout at the building. And that way, if we got the seal coating done at the same time as the paving and the whole park was striped at once, it would be on the same, you know, it would be striped at the same time every year instead of half the park being striped one time and, you know, and the other. So that's, and then the sidewalk project, I don't, I don't know, I know that the safety path is coming, but I don't know anything about that. We didn't talk about it today.
I have one quick one.
Sure, Terry.
Because I was kind of surprised, they're doing construction on Walton between Clintonville and Baldwin. And last time when they did the other section, there was one lane open each way. It is totally closed right now, so just so people are aware, I don't know how long it's going to be, but Walton is closed between Clintonville and Baldwin right now for resurfacing.
All right, anything else? Okay, any motion to adjourn?
We'll do adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.